... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to note that Item 3, the update on the willows, is taken off the agenda. The Resolution 2015, Number C, under Public Works, Stormwater, they're going to come back at another meeting. And Biomed has asked that we take that off the agenda for now. So, C and D under Public Works, and Number 3 is off the agenda. So if you're here for those items, we will not be discussing those items this evening unless you want to discuss it under public comment. I would like to note, we had an executive session this evening, and we discussed personnel matters, and litigation matters, and real estate matters. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Could I have a motion?
I'll so moved.
Can I have a second? I'll second. Can't wait too long. Any commissioner want to take any item off the consent agenda?
I don't want to take anything off, Bill. I want to raise a point about, A, that report wasn't posted on the web until today. So, I mean, I reviewed it, but nonetheless, it was late getting up, so hopefully we can correct that.
We can. If you want to hold it till the next meeting, we can do that.
You sure there's nothing on there you need?
We can, we can hold that.
No, just the public would not have an opportunity to review it. All right, let's pull that one then.
Everybody agree?
My sense is we would pay it unless there's a reason not to, but if the board feels otherwise.
What's the sense of the board? I mean, I don't think we should pull it. I think we should just pass it.
The dispersment list. And that dispersment list is not in there, yeah?
John?
It's our, okay. Well, leave it in.
Okay. Anybody in the public have a comment on any of these items? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes 6 to 0. All right, now we have recognition of the Radnor Police Department. Chief? Sure, you can have both of them.
So, with the commissioners' permission, I'd like to bring the Radnor officers that were involved in the incident at the school, along with the Haverford officers, please come forward. And I'll, I'll tell ladies and gentlemen in the audience what this is all about. Also, the district attorney, Jack Whalen, is here. If he could please come up. And district attorney has something separate that he'll do after we're done with the officers. We, we pride ourselves in Radnor of having an excellent relationship with the schools. In fact, we gave a, a school safety seminar a few months ago, and coincidentally, Barak Academy was, was there at that time, and they were very instrumental in giving us information and helping us. In fact, we had an incident not too long ago, and there is a school that does everything right. They had an incident where bullets were found, and they did not hesitate, and they called us right away. And it turned out to be something that wasn't a safety factor, but it was a good exercise for both the schools and for the Radnor Police Department. Well, this one was a little bit more significant, more serious, and again, the school did everything proper, and so did the officer standing behind me. If you'll just allow me to read this, and I usually summarize, but I think this is so important because you may see all of these officers and detectives behind me, and you'll say, wow, do they all really deserve recognition? And when I read this, you'll see that they really did. So, it happened on Monday, April 27th, it was about 9:47 a.m., and my officers were dispatched to the Jack Barak Hebrew Academy on Bryn Mawr Avenue. And what they did was they initiated the Del Pass Intruder Alarm Activation, which in and of itself was remarkable, and that's something the district attorney will talk about, that the district attorney's office implemented that just a few months ago, because he was concerned about school safety. So, the academy activated that alarm. Immediately after the Del Pass activation, my officers responded immediately, and they found out that there was a stabbing that just occurred inside the cafeteria of the school. It was a former employee that stabbed another employee. So luckily, the children were not in danger. But again, the academy did everything the right way. The school went into lockdown mode. Officer Mark Bates was the first arriving at the scene. He contacted the school administrators, found out exactly what happened. He located the victim, assisted in providing first aid, and also, equally importantly, he provided flash information regarding the suspect's description and the direction he was heading. After that, we had Sergeant Pinto, Officer Pyree, Radico, Bell, and Alexander. They responded to the scene of the incident, and Sergeant Pinto checked the Glenbrook Septa Station and confirmed that the perpetrator had boarded an inbound train and was heading to Upper Darby. The Haverford and Upper Darby Police Departments were advised of the description of the perpetrator. Officers Pyree, Radico, and Alexander were directed to the train stations east of Radnor to search for the perpetrator, while Officer Bell was directed to check for additional intruders and assist with the crime scene at the school, which is, again, good protocol because you can never assume that there's just one suspect. Haverford Police Officers, and they're behind me here, Deputy Chief Viola, Lieutenant Hagan, Detectives Johnson, Kenny, and Officer Escher, and McGibney entered the Septa Train at the Overbrook Station, and they located the perpetrator. His name was Ivan Moore. He was on the train, and he was taken into custody. He was arrested, and he was transported back to the Radnor Police Department by Officers Pyree, Radico, and Alexander. Again, the reason why we have so many people up here. Once he was in custody, Detective Santa Guido, Schreiber, Four, and Glock not only responded to the scene and collected physical evidence, located the knife, they also interrogated the victim. He was Mirandized, and he gave a full confession. So, everything worked out well. We did have an incident where somebody was injured. Luckily, the children were not injured, and the detectives and the officers behind me did everything according to protocol. Lieutenant Andrew Block responded to, and directed, and led the entire Radnor Police Department in response to the investigation. And equally important, he kept the media informed, because let's face it, we had an incident at the school, we had helicopters in the air, and Lieutenant Block did everything right and made sure that the parents that were watching on TV weren't overly alarmed. So, based on the performance of all the officers and detectives behind me, I'd like to present them an award of commendation of merit for their act of intelligent, valuable police service and an arrest through highly skilled performance as both Radnor and Haverford Police Officers. Congratulations. With the President's permission, I'm going to turn the microphone over to District Attorney Jack Whalen. Sir.
Thank you Superintendent. In the district attorney's office and with Delaware County Council, Councilman John McBlain is here with me tonight. There is nothing more important in our offices than the safety of our children across Delaware County. I want to take the opportunity tonight to commend Radnor Township, to commend Haverford Township. These officers are professional, brave men and women that risk their lives each and every day that you're safe. And when you go onto a particular call, you don't know what you're going to encounter, but day in and day out, they go on calls to make sure that our lives are protected. So I wanted to commend them. I also wanted to briefly state, as Superintendent Carrullo alluded to, through the efforts of Delaware County Council, Councilman McBlain, and the other members of council, after the tragedy at Sandy Hook, Delaware County got together and said, how can we make our schools safer? How can we increase the response time of our emergency responders? And we came up with a solution that each and every school in Delaware County would be equipped with, we're calling, a Del Pass button, which is really a panic button. When this button is pushed, it may be the only one in the country, when that button is pushed, it's immediately notifying, our 911 system gets an immediate notification, instantaneously activates a listening device in the area where the Del Pass alarm is pushed, so that the 911 center can hear everything that's going on, and we can respond immediately and then advise the first responders what is being heard. In this particular case, the Hebrew Academy did everything according to protocol that each and every school official is trained on, and that is, when there is an armed intruder in one of our schools, you immediately push that button and you wait for that response, and there is a tremendous response that occurs once that button is pushed. And what you see behind me is that type of response, and this is only some of the officers that responded on that particular day in order to make sure that the kids at the Hebrew Academy are safe and secure. And we're happy to report today that they are safe and secure, and they were not at risk of danger in that particular incident, once everything was secured by the officers. But these officers never know what they're responding to. So tonight, it's the great pleasure of the Officer of the District Attorney, as well as Delaware County Council, to take the opportunity to recognize Haverford Township Police, as well as Radnor Police, and for their great leadership through the chiefs in those departments, as well as the ranking officers. So we thank them, and we'd like to now present those plaques.
Deputy Chief Viola. For the Haverford Township Police Department. Superintendent Chief Carrullo, for Radnor Police Department, and for an incredibly brave response, and in accordance with protocol, we want to recognize that Jack Barak Hebrew Academy and Sharon Lemon, for her, for her actions in securing the safety of the children at that academy. We thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could you get, could you get a mic so that people at home can hear you? Thanks.
I was going to say, and I want to thank Alex Stroker, my Chief Operations and Development Officer, but I have to say thank you to everyone up here. I cannot tell you how grateful we are and how lucky we are to be part of this community. I really have to thank Lieutenant Andy Block, and for, as you had heard, an earlier incident we had, again, having nothing directly to do with us, but bullets were found in our school back in November, an individual from an outside group had left them there, and I have to commend Lieutenant Chris Flanagan. We feel at Barak that not only are we safe and secure, but we have amazing community partners and friends. And not only had they help, did they help us in terms of safety and navigating the media, but in both cases, meeting with our parents for as many meetings as we felt were necessary to call, and we really have learned so much, and we're a safer and better school because of it. And I just thank you so much. We're very grateful, we're very grateful to Delaware County to have that Del Pass button, and to know that the police were on our campus in two minutes. And I believe it was 25 minutes from the incident until the suspect was apprehended by Haverford Township Police. You know, what more could you ever ask for? Thank you all so much. We're so grateful.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. We appreciate the support of the district attorney's office, county council, Haverford Township, and Radnor Township. Just wanted to let the community know, we are going to issue a certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement for our Citizens Police Academy. We held a very large event where we spent a lot of time reviewing the parts of the class, but the nine-week program, here's a section of the 21 graduates who were able to successfully complete what we call rigorous, fun, and exciting training, and I will hand those out now. Corporal Sherman. Also, we're very pleased to have, and I'd like to present it to Superintendent Carrullo and Mr. Zankowski, we received today, for all of the graduates, which is a surprise, and for the township, a letter of recognition from Senator Pat Toomey. On behalf of the United States Senate, I am honored to congratulate the graduates of the Citizens Police Academy. The CPA is a valuable program that allows citizens crucial insight into the criminal justice system. Under the extraordinary tutelage of the Radnor Township Police Department, I am confident in your ability to help educate your fellow citizens about their police department and its importance to the community. Now, more than ever, law enforcement needs to know their efforts are admired and valued day in and day out. It is all too easy to forget the sacrifices our law enforcement officers make. That is why it is important for all of us to let them know we are grateful for all their efforts. Programs like the CPA highlight the difficult job of protecting our communities and keeping us safe when others would choose to run away. Our police officers run into the breach, keeping us safe when others would choose to run away. As graduates of the CPA, you are making the pledge to help those officers who have put on a badge to answer the call of those in need, no matter the danger. I am pleased to stand with you as you rise to the challenge as civil servants. I am grateful for the leadership of the Radnor Township Police, and together you will be a formidable catalyst for community crime prevention. Thank you all for what you do, and please do not hesitate to call me if ever I may be assistance. And again, Senator Pat Toomey, for each of the citizen graduates, and Superintendent Carrullo. Also, two guys who are always here getting the job done, and we wanted to make sure they were recognized. They put on a phenomenal video, which I hope you check on our cable channel and our website. You can watch the graduation ceremony and the video that they worked on, but Bob Hale and Jim Doling were right there with us, and we are acknowledging them this evening. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you. It fell upon me to write a letter from the members of the Citizens Police Academy to the Police Department, and I'm going to, to read it to you now. If you don't mind, I need my glasses. Citizens Police Academy Class 2015-01. "To the Radnor Police Department, it is with great pleasure, thanks, and admiration that we acknowledge the contributions made to this inaugural class of the Citizens Police Academy by the members of the Radnor Police Department. At the beginning of this academy, we had no idea what being a member of the class would entail. None of us could ever have predicted the dedication, professionalism, and seriousness that each member of the Radnor Police Department displayed during each didactic and practical session. The goals of the academy were to instruct citizens of Radnor Township about the workings of their police department, and also to encourage the graduates to become more involved, both in their community and with the police. To a person, the members of this first graduating class of the academy agree that those goals have not only been met, but have been exceeded far beyond anyone's expectations. We would like to thank every member of the department for their participation, and we especially wish to thank Corporal Walter Sherman and Lieutenants Andy Block and Chris Flanagan for their untiring coordination of every aspect of the classes. Well done, gentlemen. Presented with sincere gratitude, this 5th day of May, 2015." Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your participation. We appreciate it.
If you see the new township website, Jim Doling's put a tremendous amount of time in on that. If you haven't seen it, check it out, but just want to thank Jim. He put a lot of time and effort, and it really does look nice.
That's a tough act to follow, but I have a brief presentation and slideshow, which take about 10 minutes.
First, you're going to do yourself the people at home.
Yes, my name's Greg Pritchard, and I'm from Wayne. And so, first of all, thank you for giving us a few minutes to speak to you this evening. I want to start by making a brief clarification from what's on the agenda of tonight's meeting. We are an independent group that is not affiliated with the Historical Society. Some of us are members of the society, and some are not, but the society has not endorsed this plan and does not get involved with policy matters. We're a group of Radnor citizens who would like you to consider adopting a new ordinance that would help protect historic properties within Radnor Township, and also to expand the districts covered by the current Harb ordinance. We have been encouraged by several members of this board to draft such an ordinance and to research similar regulations within neighboring communities in light of the loss or potential loss of many important historic resources in Radnor Township over the past few years. In short, what we are asking for is a new process to prevent anyone from simply buying a permit and demolishing historic buildings without some degree of oversight based on significance rather than zoning or other purely legal matters. Since the 1988 Comprehensive Plan, now more than 25 years ago, it has been recommended that this, something like this be adopted, so it is not a new idea by any means. Of course, there's already an ordinance that has been in effect for 10 years now to protect historic properties in this way within three districts in the township, North Wayne, South Wayne, and Luella Court, all shown here. But when we zoom out of this map, we see that these three Harb districts are only found within the first, third, and a small portion of the sixth wards. And yet, there are many important historic sites in all seven wards. For some examples, let's start in the first ward. While a great deal of the ward is part of the North Wayne Historic District, there are many important structures outside of that district's boundaries. The Finley House, for example, and the, the Historical Society isn't going anywhere, going anywhere for a long time, but this is a perfect example of a historic resource in Radnor that won't be protected from future development or demolition without this new kind of ordinance. There are many great homes and other structures in the second ward, and among them is this former store building on King of Prussia Road, which was once the heart of a community called Morgan's Corner. In the third ward, one of the greatest architectural masterpieces of the main line, the gatehouse that was once part of an estate called Ashwood Manor, and it's a building that's synonymous with mainline history for a great many people. The oldest building in Radnor Township, the Friends Meeting House, will turn 300 years old in just two years. It has always been listed as Historic Site Number One in past inventories, and it's located in the fourth ward. Also in the fourth ward is the oldest house in Radnor Township, the so-called Holly Tree House, which is thought to date back to about 1720. In the fifth ward, Whitehall Station is the oldest train station in the township. It's now part of the thrift shop at the Bryn Mawr Hospital. And although the railroad no longer runs past it, last month marked the 150th anniversary of President Lincoln's funeral train passing through the main line, and this building was there when President Lincoln's funeral train passed by. In the sixth ward, there are several important buildings, including the Mill Dam Club, which dates back to around 1799. And finally, in the seventh ward, the Radnor United Methodist Church, part of which dates back to about 1833, is an integral part of the Garrett Hill community still to this day. So, how did we come up with a list of just over 100 properties that we think are priorities to protect? Well, we didn't just pick them out of thin air. The list is based on surveys that were commissioned and paid for by Radnor Township in 1988 and 2003 to identify Radnor Township's most important historic resources. These reports were compiled by experts in history and architecture, both volunteers and paid consultants, based on a wealth of documentary evidence. While these reports were painstakingly compiled and since 2010 have been updated by volunteers as new information has come to light, there has been no action based on their recommendations and findings in the more than 25 years since the first was submitted to the township. In the, in these past surveys, the largest collection of historic buildings identified was in downtown Wayne, and because it is such an intact, continuous stretch of historic properties, we would like to propose that in addition to an ordinance regarding scattered historic sites, downtown Wayne become a new Harb Protected District as well. And we're not the only ones to recognize the historic importance of downtown Wayne. In fact, thanks to property owners within downtown Wayne, it's property owners, not activists, the district was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2012, and that is a rare and remarkable distinction that any town should be proud of. In fact, we would like to adopt the boundaries of the district as accepted by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission and the National Park Service as the boundaries of a potential new downtown Wayne Harb District. Some examples of the important historic properties in the district, the Wayne Hotel, which has been individually listed on the National Register for 30 years, the Anthony Wayne Theater, which is, has been Wayne's cultural heart since the 1920s, and many historic and scale-appropriate commercial buildings. In addition, we are proposing a fifth Harb District, which would be even smaller than today's Luella Court District, and I'm speaking of Banjo Town, which is a small community with a fascinating history located in the sixth ward. Starting in the 1890s, the houses of Banjo Town were built mostly to house employees of the Adderbury and Montgomery Estates, or Drossen being the Montgomery Estate. Despite being essentially worker housing, in essence, the community remains largely intact and original, and it's a great example of a purpose-built community, and one that is very intact. Excuse me. Banjo Town's current residents are dedicated to the community and are interested in ensuring that it remain protected from uncharacteristic development. Here's some views of Banjo, excuse me, Banjo Town properties. So here's what we're asking for compared to what's under protection today. The historic properties currently under protection include 198 properties in North Wayne, 393 properties in South Wayne, and 28 properties in Luella Court. That's a total of 619 properties that are currently protected thanks to Radnor's Harb Ordinance. So to that 619, we would like you to add 138 dispersed properties scattered through the township as identified in those Township Commission surveys, plus the 67 properties identified in the National Registered District of Downtown Wayne, and the nine properties of Banjo Town, for a total of 214 additional properties. That's just over one-third of the number currently being protected. Thank you very much. And we ask for this in part because of what we have lost, and even in the past 10 years, a great many important historic buildings have fallen to redevelopment, and in many cases, there was no reason these structures could not have been repurposed for new and better uses. The mansion that had been the Villa Stratford Restaurant is one that comes to mind from recent months. The log cabin at Eastern University, which was considered one of the greatest examples of early 20th century cabin architecture in the United States, was left to deteriorate and fall to ruin despite a National Trust for Historic Preservation-funded report that proved the feasibility of its preservation. One of Radnor's most interesting turn-of-the-century homes was Poplar House, which despite its incredible history and architecture, was almost overlooked because it was secluded on a large property and thus away from the public eye. The proposed demolition about five years ago did not go unnoticed, however, because many... many residents voiced their concerns, and even the National Trust for Historic Preservation became involved and noted the threat to the estate. In the end, both this mansion and the tenant house, which was over 200 years old, were torn down, and neither building's historic status was a consideration in approving or denying demolition. Going a little further back in time, Sullivan Hall, which was a century-old mansion on the Valley Forge Campus, was demolished in 2001, and it was actually the home of the first president of the Radnor Board of Commissioners. So these are the kinds of losses that we would like to try to prevent and instead promote alternative solutions that are beneficial to everyone. Now, we are literally surrounded in Radnor by other communities that have similar ordinances, including both Trudifern and Easttown, Lower Marion, and several municipalities elsewhere in Delaware County like Media and Haverford. These are communities that are like us, places that attract people because of their character and unique qualities, including history. There is no reason that we can't be like them. We do not have time to go into all the details of our proposed ordinance, nor the entire list of properties that we would like to see protected. And again, this is only a proposal, and all details are subject to your amendments and approval, but thank you for your time and consideration of our request.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, and we look forward to reviewing your work and your proposal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Public participation?
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, ladies and gentlemen at home, management staff. My name is Marty Castello. I'm part of the Radnor Township Memorial Day Parade Committee, and tonight I would just like to make a couple of brief announcements about the parade, which is next Monday, 25th of May, 2015, and the parade starts promptly at 9:45 at the, right across from Giant Foods, right at Lincoln Financial Center, and it starts at exactly 9:45. I just want to let the veterans at home know that all veterans in the community are invited to march or ride in the parade. This year as last year, we have several service cars, Army, Marines, Navy, Coast Guard, Air Force, and Navy, where the veterans can board these cars down at the starting blocks down at Lincoln Financial Center and ride in the service car to the memorial. Which brings me to, the parade is a wonderful parade. There's over 68 units, and each unit has a number of different walkers, or cars, trucks, et cetera, in it. And who puts this together? Well, there's 18 people on this committee. Two of them are police officers, Lieutenant Andy Block and Corporal Kevin Gallagher, who worked very hard and tirelessly putting this parade together, and they do a magnificent job, and they should be congratulated every time you see them because of what they do and the hard work that they put in, along with the other 16 members. Everything from how many chairs you have on the grandstands to how many porta-potties you have along the way. It's all part of the parade, and I hope people can come out and see it. This year's parade marshal is Mr. Bob Hoyt. He's a member of American Legion Anthony Wayne Post 418. He's a Korean War veteran, and he worked up on the 38th parallel. People who know about the Korean War, you know that was not a great place to be, but that's where Mr. Hoyt was. And as long as I've known him, I've seen him in every parade since I was a little boy, and he wears his uniform, and he'll wear it again this year. Dennis Murphy will be the speaker this year. He was last year's grand marshal, and he will be talking about the 118. I want to thank Bob for putting the picture, which is right behind me on the back wall, of the 118 fallen from Radnor Township. 57 of them are Radnor High School graduates. And the first one to die was Mr. William Bateman, class of 1911, Radnor High School, and he died in July 1918. One of the last ones to die was Mr. Larry Marshall, Sergeant Marshall, and he died May 1st, 1968. So in a 50-year period in this township, we lost 118 residents. That's a short period of time for so many losses. And the reason I'm telling you this is, like that picture depicts back there, the children of Radnor Township have researched the names of all 118, the students of St. Catherine's, and the students of Archbishop Carroll at Radnor High School have chipped in too. And the picture depicts 118 students holding up the works of St. Catherine's who researched all the names. So why is that important? Well, when we read the names Monday, they're not names anymore. We know who they are. We know where they went to school. We know when they died, how they died, where they died, where they're buried. And this is very important because we're talking about community tonight and a number of different things. What more important part of community can you have than knowing who gave you, us, the right to meeting this meeting hall, to discuss, and sometimes a little angrily, happily, but that's the right of the American citizens, and it was given to us by those who did not come back. So after the parade, and right around 11:30, please meet us, the veterans, and the other members of the community, down at the memorial, and listen to the 118 names read aloud. Since we started this program of researching the names, as you know, we had a Larry Marshall Day, and we had a James Montgomery Whitman Day, and we're also going to have this year a Roger. We're going to have a John Paul Murphy Day, and a Donald Burris Day. But talking to the family members, no matter how many years have gone by, no matter how many years, the grief is still overwhelming. So a lot of the family members will be there. Please come to the memorial after the parade and pay your respects to our heroes. Thank you very much. God bless you, and see you Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
All right, Mr. President, I'd like to, I missed this after Greg Pritchard made his presentation. I wish I had said something. I think it's very helpful and valuable that you and your colleagues have put together this list of properties, have also advocated the creation of another district in the township, but it's really significant to me that we have a citizen group that wants to help us as a governing body protect and preserve important properties in the township. I know a group of us in the late 90s, early 2000s, including Beverly Barnes, who's sitting next to Greg, pooled our resources and got SEPTA and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to fund an effort, and we also got private money to fund an effort to preserve the Wayne Station, to get it placed on the National Register of Historic Places. So it's through citizens' action that we get these things done. And I agree with you that it was a real loss when we could not save the Villa Stratford Restaurant. I know we tried, but we ran into a problem. I won't go into the details, but we did lose that, and I hope there is never another property in Radnor as important as that property that will fall into the category of a lost treasure that should have been preserved. So I'm hoping my colleagues will support an ordinance. I don't know if you've talked to our management about the drafting of an ordinance, but if you have not, I would encourage you to do so. If you have done that, my good, and I'm looking forward to having an ordinance presented to us for action. Thank you.
Jimmy, you're up with Public Works and Engineering.
So before we move off of that subject, who should draft, if there's an ordinance, who should draft it? Because I think it would be better for us to give guidance and have staff direct it than to accept. Like, I think we should be the ones that derive that first, that anchor. I don't know if others should.
I don't object to that. I think, though, that there is valuable information and experience and history that could be obtained from people like Greg Pritchard and Beverly Barnes.
Yeah, and I'm not dismissing that by any means.
So we're going to review the ordinance, and we will direct staff about drafting a resolution, which we will get your input on.
Great. Well, I just wanted to note, we have, like I said, we have researched similar ordinances in nearby communities, sort of, we have drafted something that resembles one of those, but we can, certainly, it's up to you and we'll.
We're going to take a good look at it. Thank you.
My sense is that you should provide that, provide it to all of us, let us look at it.
Absolutely.
And then, I don't think we just let the anchor come to us, like, meaning, there are elements that I could see myself being very supportive of, but there are elements that I could see myself opposing.
Sure.
And I would, I don't want that to come. I want us to decide that, not somebody else to decide that. So I don't know how others think it would be best to do it, but my sense is it's better for us to give some guidance to staff and then let staff develop that.
And that's the way we always do it.
We're not trying to decide anything. We're just putting forwards.
Even if they were to draft it, it does not deprive or deny us the right to reject. All are part of it. We have the final say.
On a practical matter, though, I don't think that that's always the case.
We're splitting hairs.
Phil, but you're kind of being very dismissive of my attempt to facilitate a process here, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, we're going to.
Yeah, but you're dismissing my, you're dismissing my request.
Okay, all right.
All right, now, and maybe if four people feel that way, we can do that, but my sense is that you should get us the information, and whether we do it at a public meeting, but we need to decide what that draft is.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want the next thing I see to be a draft ordinance, which is typically what happens.
It's not going to be. No. So we're going to take this information, the Commissioner's going to review it, and then we will discuss it in a public meeting and give direction.
And actually, I had provided, not the final draft, close to the final draft, to all of you two months ago.
Yeah, but that's the whole point I'm trying to, that's not, it's not appropriate to give me a final draft.
No.
I want to be part of the process that develops the initial draft.
This isn't a draft that says Radnor Township that John would do for us. It's their draft of what they think the ordinance should contain. So we'll look at that.
Yeah.
We'll decide which elements we think are inappropriate or appropriate.
We're going to work the system, and we'll see what the Commissioners can agree upon.
To Don's point, and Don brought this up before, you know, we don't want an ordinance on the agenda for introduction. We want an ordinance on the agenda for discussion.
You got it.
And that way, we discuss it, we'll vote on items up or down.
Yeah, I want it, I don't want an ordinance for discussion, I want a concept for discussion.
Yeah, I think that's the point.
And it, once it comes as an ordinance, once you present it, it becomes the anchor. And if there's an idea in it that I oppose, then it's harder to, for my point to come across. What I want is concepts. We discuss concepts. There's a consensus of concepts, and then staff turns it into an ordinance.
Right. In other words, it's always the same thing. When you draft a document, the drafters control, the, Don's calling it the anchor, the basis and the form of discussion. And I agree, the concept have, the concepts have to be discussed first, so we understand and agree and determine that there is a consensus. We have to be very careful because this could unreasonably impose on the property rights of certain people, and we want to make sure that there, any, anything would be reasonable. And I think that that's really concepts, not so much a final draft of, so I would rather see bullet points and discussion points.
Yes, elements of what you think should be in the ordinance as opposed to the language of the ordinance itself.
And we can also provide example ordinances from nearby communities for your reference only.
Very useful for me.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks again.
All right, Public Safety, I'd like to move ordinance 2015-06.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Commissioner comment? Public comment?
Well, Commissioner comment. Could you go through, we're changing, just recite the ordinance and then the rationale for the change?
Yes, Commissioner, with your permission. We met with the, some of the business owners over there, and we currently have four 15-minute meters on that stretch from Lancaster Avenue, south side. We're asking for two more 15-minute meters in that location. It's more conducive not only for the businesses, but also for the public that goes there in the morning because of the 15-minute turnaround rate.
And Chief, did you say it's just two meters?
It'll be, it'll be a total of six, Commissioner. This is, we're asking for two more 15-minute meters on that stretch on Lancaster Avenue, south side of Lancaster Avenue.
So it's two more from four? That's a.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Two more spots, actually, yes.
And the logic is just to create turnover, that there should be some number of rapid turnover meters inside a urban area?
That is correct. Under the Township Manager's direction, I went out there, visited some of the businesses, and that was one of the things that they requested, especially in the morning for the businesses where people go there for breakfast items and things like that.
Public comment? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is six to zero. Public Works and Engineering?
Yes, I'm happy to note that we have a presentation by our Police Department tonight of the traffic situation on Pine Tree Road, including the evaluation of a stop sign and a discussion. So Superintendent, would you take a lead on this, please?
One of the things we did, Commissioner, and Commissioner Booker actually asked for a special meeting that we had with the residents of Pine Tree that have been very patient because this has been going on for a number of months. Under the direction of the Township Manager, we had Ms. Amy Kaminsky work with our officers in the Traffic Safety Unit to come up with different options. Obviously, speed humps was on the table. Ms. Kaminsky had a conversation with myself, Mr. Norsini, and Mr. Zinkowski to look at the feasibility that Commissioner Booker brought up last month about putting stop signs along certain areas of Pine Tree Road. So Ms. Kaminsky did some research, and she's here to make that presentation, along with input from my officers.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. Just a minute while I, of course, the touchpad's not working for me.
Well, you can introduce yourself to the people at home.
Hi, I'm Amy Kaminsky. I'm the traffic engineer. I work for Gilmore and Associates. And originally, we had done a site distance, or a traffic calming analysis for Pine Tree Road, and about a month ago, we met with residents on Pine Tree to discuss some of the potential improvements. And one of the things that we did discuss was that the site distance may be less than desirable for several of the intersections. So we were charged with going out and doing a field analysis and coming up with an analysis based on the site distance. So, yeah, I'm just not sure why I can't get the touchpad to work. All right, well, let's see. Let's try the old tab. All right. Yes. Thank you. Sorry about that. So I'll just run real quick through the analysis that we did. We came out to the four intersections that we had studied in the traffic calming analysis. We already knew what the speeds were out there. Based on the speeds that were out there, we were able to do a site distance evaluation. And one of the things you look at is the amount of site distance that's available and the amount that's recommended or calculated based on the prevailing speeds on the roadway. The posted speed's 25. We found that the eastbound approach is 35 miles per hour, and the westbound approach is 38. At Cricket Lane, looking left, 59 feet is available. 233 feet are required based on the speed limit, or the 85th percentile speed. And to the right, 354 is existing and 309 is required. The left site distance is deficient.
That's at Cricket and Pine Tree.
That's at Cricket and Lane, Cricket and Pine Tree, correct.
Leaving Cricket Lane, looking left.
Correct. Stopped on Cricket Lane at the stop sign, 10 feet back from the. Correct, stopped on Cricket Lane at the stop sign, 10 feet back from the traveled way, looking to your left, you're unable to maintain sight of vehicles as they're coming from that direction.
Okay, and they're traveling, are they the ones traveling 38, or are they?
I'd have to go back up.
35.
I, I don't recall that exactly.
You said eastbound was 35.
But I don't remember which one was which, so, what, 35, okay.
It's 35.
Okay, I can go back up to the top if you guys want, there it is. Eastbound is 35, westbound is 38, so on that particular approach it would be 35.
Okay.
So, Title 67 in the PA code allows you to, the township has the ability to trim shrubs, remove trees, or eliminate things that may inhibit site distance, so citing that, you could trim those trees, and we believe if you trim those shrubs that you see in the upper right-hand corner, you would have sufficient site distance at that approach there, it's the, the shrubs that are making it difficult to obtain or be able to view vehicles as they approach from that direction.
Amy, can, can you zoom in on there, so hit the, put that plus, yeah, go to 100%.
Alrighty.
And then zoom in, you can go a little bit bigger.
Alright, just a second. There's the view, it kind of pixelates when it gets a little bit larger.
Yeah, I mean you can't really cut that back.
It's gonna have to be removed, because it's gonna look, you know, I'm not a nursery specialist, but I believe that it would probably look very funny if we trimmed it the way that we would need to, to gain that. Pardon? Okay, the right distance is fine, is adequate. Moving over to Rock Rose Lane, we have adequate site distance for the right and the left turn, you can see from the photographs that it's sufficient. Moving to the north Spruce Tree Lane, we have 80 feet to the left, 312 is required, and then to the right we have adequate site distance, we have 380 existing and 235 are required. At this particular approach, there's a crest in the roadway that actually, although there are trees and shrubs that are in your way, we do not, we're not of the opinion that if you remove the undergrowth, that you're gonna be able to gain adequate site distance to the left, so our recommendation would be at that particular approach to move it to a multi-lane stop, or multi-way stop control. And then moving on to, we already did that one, Spruce Tree Woods Lane, looking to the left there's 210 feet and 244 is required, however, looking to the left, if you remove that scrub, we still don't believe that you would have adequate site distance, that there's a horizontal curve and there's a crest in the roadway that blocks the view of the vehicle for the amount, for the height that you're required, according to the PENDOT methodology. So this particular intersection, we would also recommend a multi-way stop control. One of the other things that we discussed during that field meeting, I was not in attendance, Mr. Drummond was, was the fact that these two stop control intersections are more towards the Upper Gulf area, so we would recommend putting some kind of a traffic calming element down between, let's see, down further south of the intersection, towards the Cricket Lane area and Rock Rose, that would be our recommendation, because we believe by installing the all-way stop control up at Woods Lane and Spruce Tree Road, that would probably slow down vehicles sufficiently, because they wouldn't have enough time to gather up speed to continue moving on down, but the distance from Rock Rose Lane down to King of Prussia Road is likely sufficient that a vehicle could gain additional speed on that. Are there any questions?
Well, this was the second study you did, isn't it?
Yes, the first.
Why didn't you?
The first study was a traffic calming analysis, and we didn't look at the site distance while we were out at the site, and if you recall, when we came and spoke about this at the meeting, and then we met later on with the residents, those were one of the things that we discussed, that, that the site distance may have been problematic at the intersection.
So, we, we limited you, the first, the first study in looking at the, these measures, stop signs and?
We were looking at traffic calming elements at that, at that point.
I, I mentioned this because it's, we've lost about a year, I mean your first study was about a year ago.
Well, the analysis was done back in November, and I don't believe it came before the board until April.
Jim, Jim, stop signs, I've been on the board eight years, for seven, seven years and seven months I've heard, don't use stop signs for traffic calming.
Correct.
So when you're asking for traffic calming, you're not asking for stop signs, you're not asking for site distances, you're asking for speed tables, speed humps, maybe bulb, bulb bump outs, things like that.
Curve extensions, correct.
So this is, the ask has changed.
Correct.
Because the, I guess the consensus was, we don't want a bunch of speed tables on the street, they didn't, the street didn't necessarily meet the conditions, the conditions didn't meet the requirements for speed tables at all locations, so you know, there was a lot of questions.
My understanding was that the fire department was very, the emergency services did not want the speed humps further up on the roadway.
And we have a lot of requirements around speed tables, you have thousands, at the time it was a thousand foot maybe distance.
Yes, maximum 700 feet, right, so we would have had to put four different speed humps along this road, and when we were at the meeting and had the discussion with the residents, then we became aware that many of the residents felt that it was difficult to see, oh, I'm sorry, I believe the woman that lives at 107 discussed problems coming out of her driveway because of the site, and so then we started talking about the different sections that PENDOT allows for trimming of shrubs and trees to improve sight lines, and since that ended up happening, Mr. Zankowski contacted our office and asked us to perform a site distance analysis at all the intersections.
Okay, you wanna go up the road again and tell us what, what is proposed?
Commissioner, if, if I could just jump in for a second here, one of, one of the reasons too, like what Amy was talking about, when we first got the request for traffic calming, the request was for speed humps, and that's when they did their, their survey of the neighbors, so that's why we, we only looked at that, that's why when she said we were limited, we're only considering that, Officer Mattis just wants to add something about what Amy just said.
Yeah, Amy, we met with Damian, the, the traffic calming areas between Cricket and King of Prussia is where we suggested putting some kind of traffic, not between Rock Rose and Cricket.
Okay, yeah, I don't think it, I, I, down in this area is where you're looking at, is right around here.
Yeah.
Can you close that up?
Make that bigger?
Yeah, make that bigger.
I can. So, King of Prussia is along here.
Right.
And then Pine Tree comes around this way, and one of the locations recommended was right in this area.
For what?
For a speed hump.
Speed hump.
And my understanding is that the, and this should be vetted out with the fire department, because I believe that they were more concerned about, there's more significant grades up in this area, and their concern was being able to get the momentum and continue over those speed humps without losing time when they're doing emergency response.
Okay, so between King of Prussia and Cricket, proposing a speed hump?
Correct.
Cricket, we're proposing a stop sign, removing the shrubs?
Removing the shrubs, correct, leaving the stop sign as it is presently in free flow on Pine Tree.
Okay, Rock Rose?
Pine Tree continues free flow, and there's nothing to be done at that intersection.
And Spruce Tree?
All-way stop control.
Which means?
We're gonna add two stop signs and all-way placards underneath them for all approaches to that intersection.
And the same thing for Woods?
And the same thing for Woods Lane, and then we would do advanced signs indicating that the traffic conditions have changed, just to alert motorists.
Upper Gulf Road just has the one.
Upper Gulf Road will remain as it is.
Okay, alright, well, any Commissioner comment, question?
I guess, on Upper Gulf Road, it says, it shows four stop signs, so just, what is that?
They, it currently is an all-way stop control, that's a multi, you stop on all approaches when, up at Pine Tree and Upper Gulf Road, that's how it is, this, what you're seeing, yes, there's no change from what you're seeing out there right now, and this is the existing conditions that are out there right now, so our proposal would be to just add stop signs on Pine Tree at Spruce Tree, and stop signs on Pine Tree at Woods Lane.
And again, that's due to site distances.
And that's because of the, the nature of the roadway, without doing some engineering to the roadway, we don't believe you're gonna have adequate site distance, even if you did remove those shrubs, so we would not recommend removing those shrubs, since you're not gonna gain anything from it, you're still gonna need that multi-way stop control.
And, the other area that I looked at was along Pine Tree down where, where that cursor is, there's, there's a lot of shrubs just around the turn itself, so your analysis doesn't relate to, no, up, up above that.
Up in this area?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're, you're, you know, and, and the issue right there is around that turn, people can't see, there's, there's, there's one driveway sign I think that's right there.
On the other side?
On the right, on this, on this.
On the Cricket Lane Ward side, or, okay, okay, over here then?
Over here, but it's, you know, because you have a, a sign that's a yellow, yellow caution sign that says driveway, maybe it's up a little further.
Right.
But there's a, it's difficult to see around the turn, so your analysis related only to the intersections and not to?
Correct, if, if, if a resident is concerned about the site distance at their driveway that takes access to a road, because a shrub is in the way, then that same section would apply to their driveway, and if they are unable to see because there's a shrub in the way, or there's some undergrowth, or something to that effect, then according to that particular code, the township has the right to request that the resident remove that obstruction.
And so, Bob and, and Superintendent, didn't we ask those residents there to, to cut back, and we got no response?
That was a, a couple of years ago that we did, but I don't think we asked just recently.
No, not recently, it's about two years ago we sent letters. 2013, we sent letters to all the residents, having to, requiring them citing the ordinance and having, asking them to cut back along their property line, with Pine Tree.
And, and what, what is adequate in 2013, is it necessarily adequate in 2015, because the growth, you know, it's one of those things that until a resident brings it to your attention, you're not aware of it, so it's, it's up to the resident to contact the township and let them know that they're having difficulty with this, and to allow the police officers to come out and look at it and make an assessment.
Well, I think it's fair to say, 2013 it was bad, it's probably worse now, and I think.
If it wasn't trimmed, indeed.
That's, I think that's the case, and I think that that's part of the concern, is coming around that turn, there is heavy shrubs all the way to the road, road surface, to the cartway, and, just so, all, all around the turn there, so that that impedes the vision as people come down the, and that those site distances are equally important.
Correct.
But that's just not part of our analysis.
Correct.
Commissioner, if I may, I like what Amy and the police department have come up here and would support this plan, however, I agree with you in that curve area there, and I think a speed table would work very, very well in that particular area, it may not reduce the speed what a speed hump would be, but a speed table would give some cause for the drivers to slow down, given that area, it's, it's much smoother for a rescue vehicle to get, get over, but it'd be enough to slow that speed down somewhat, so I would, in addition to what's recommended here, which I support, is to the addition of a speed table in that particular area, because the Superintendent and I did drive this area, and I think that would be helpful in that spot, so I, I agree with you in that area.
Can you be, Bob, could you, is that down towards King of Prussia Road?
It's actually in that curve there, which Richard pointed out there.
Yeah.
Right here where the?
That's correct, in that curve.
Between Rock Rose and Cricket Lane.
Correct.
There's already a speed hump that we recommend more towards King of Prussia Road, and like the township manager.
But aren't, aren't the shrubs themselves a speed calming device on that route, on that curve?
Only if they're up close to the roadway and it narrows down the roadway, but based on the speed data that they collected for us, it's not acting as a traffic calming.
Okay. And Commissioners, I'd just like to say, like the township manager said, we, we went out Friday, we checked some properties, and we drove the whole length of Pine Tree, and, and I have to agree with the neighbors, when you're going, I guess, to be southbound, you don't even have to step on the gas, and your car will get up to 50 miles an hour.
I, I'd like to hear from the residents, but before, before I do that, will you do that, I'd like to, I, putting a speed hump in, and we've had the police, the, the fire company, ambulance, they don't want them, so I don't know why we're talking about that. Secondly, I don't, and I'll, this is subject to the residents contradicting me, because I'll take their views over mine, but I don't think the problem is at Woods Lane or Spruce Tree, I think that, but if you put stop signs there, people are gonna, okay, stop or slow down, but then they're gonna speed up again, there's a long decline there when you get to Rock Rose and Cricket, in my view, the problem is really down in the Rock Rose and Cricket Lane area, and that's where Cricket Lane, that's where we need the stop sign, that's my view.
Okay, but that's, that's a different issue, that's a traffic calming issue, and that stop sign should not be installed for traffic calming.
Can we take, can we take a look at that, take a look at the Cricket Lane pictures you took again?
Uh, wrong way, sorry.
Down, yeah, down. Alright, so.
If you look to the right there, that's where he's talking about slowing down the vehicles, but you have a very good, the, the resident is across the street, and you can see she's in, on the inside of that curve, so short of taking down trees that are probably 30 feet off the roadway to gain her that site distance that she needs, you're not gonna get it, it's gonna be very difficult to get, so, and if, but if you look from that bottom picture, look to the right, you can see a vehicle, and you can see, you know, quite a distance, 350 feet is the minimum that I'm seeing in that direction, is what, what I'm hearing when Damon went out and worked on this with the field crew.
And, but looking left, we see that?
Yes, left is, but this isn't what we're talking about, that the left distance isn't what we were considering putting, we are talking about the traffic calming there, but I think that what you're bringing up is that to the right at this intersection, because of the curve, the grades, you wanna calm the traffic because the speeds are higher as they come down that hill.
Isn't it both sides though?
It is, it's, it's worse coming down that hill, and you're gonna gain some more sight distance with the trimming, so again, it's two things that we're looking here, one is a stop, stop control.
That's my view, but I defer to the residents.
Well, and, and I guess, I, my recollection was that the fire department made it clear, any, any speed hump or a speed table requires them to come to a complete stop, and that they were against it, and.
It does.
What about other traffic calming at that curve?
The other thing, I think we've got, we're pretty, we're pretty wide there, I think ball bouts would be difficult for Public Works to be able to plow, I don't know if there's any interest in looking at medians, basically, we would put a median that would have an edge to it, allowing the edge to be plowed, and we would be reducing the travel way down to 10-feet lanes on either side of that median, that, that may give you that slowdown that you're looking for, so we would have some gorse striping leading into the median, concrete medians through the center to narrow down the travel way in both directions, that's another thing to consider.
If I may, at the, at the previous staff traffic, and I'm not speaking for Officer Mattis, but we did look at Amy's recommendations for that street, and for various reasons of either what we felt was effectiveness, or, or maintenance, or cost, the, the best, the best value for the dollar, my opinion was, and I believe Officer Mattis agreed, was to install, Amy's report I think called for a total of eight speed humps, we were looking at two perhaps in, in the affected area, again, understanding the, the issues with emergency services, in the Pennsylvania Traffic Calming Handbook, they do note that there are issues with speed humps and the emergency services, and they, they give average reductions in time, but, and that would be something for them to decide, but just from an overall standpoint, and this is before Mrs. Kaminsky was commissioned to do the stop sign, to do this other evaluation, our recommendation that left staff traffic was to just install these two, or perhaps four, start with two speed humps in the affected area, if we could do it around the curve and on the grade, not right at the curve, and then address things from that point moving forward, if additional ones were needed, or if additional methods were needed, because some, some of these projects become capital projects. projects. Some of the suggestions become capital projects in, in cost.
I think putting a speed hump on a hill with the fire company is not the best idea for the fire trucks.
No, but it would be closer down to, I'm sorry.
You want me to go back to the other?
If you would, please.
Yeah, the one, the one, but to put another one between Cricket and, you know, we probably should do something else there, because the speed hump there is going, on that hill is going to be murder on a fire truck.
It's all, it's all a hill.
Can we talk about the, can we talk about the median? I really think, in my opinion, I've been through this a few times. This sounds like a traffic calming issue. We can put stop signs in. It doesn't really calm traffic. It just creates heartache for drivers. But the median strip with maybe even trees, the question is, how wide is the road? Is it 24, what's the cartway width? Is it 24 feet, 28 feet? What is it?
Uh, I have the...
And I know the cost, the cost is high on, on this.
Yeah, I think it was 28 feet, if memory serves. I did bring the report. Let me...
And does this road typically have delivery trucks, large trucks?
There's sizable develop, you know, subdivisions on either side of Pine Tree.
It is 28 feet.
It's 28.
And a 14-foot travel lane is very wide. It's comfortable. That's, that's, when you're on a freeway, those are the, those are the travel lanes.
And that is, that is the problem, right?
Correct.
So I would suggest, and I, I'd love to save money here, but the fix is to do traffic calming and have a median, and if there's room, some type of trees or shrubs or something planting, to slow the vehicles down.
What, in the median, the trees in the median?
I wouldn't recommend.
Maybe not trees, but something.
You put that in bulbout, but it'd be, why don't we hear from the residents before we solve all the problems?
But the nice part about the, I'll just mention this, from my opinion, the bulbouts create plowing issues. The median doesn't.
One thing we've encountered, so in, in Mrs. Kaminsky's plan, and it's a, it's a fine plan with all the recommendations. So in some areas, the median is concrete, and in other areas, it's painted, which is a good engineering economy method to, to narrow the lanes. But we did a little test on Wild Haven. Now granted, there is no center line, but we did narrow the lanes. And, and I don't have the, the data. I know Officer Mattis looked at it. There's a comfort level with paint, once you start traveling that road. So I know that as I'm, if I am a speeder, and I'm going down Pine Tree, I know I better be careful where it's concrete. But where I see the, the painted mark in the road, there, there's no penalty should I be going a little fast and reach outside my curve, because I'm running on paint. Now, there's going to be heck to pay at the intersection if I do that, because there's a, a median. But that's just, just something to consider.
All right. Why don't we hear from some of the neighbors, and then we can have more discussion.
Do you want to, is it helpful to get on one of the pages, or does it... Oh, it's okay. I'm Kimberly Rolf, and thank you. It's probably like my ninth time, not here, but in front of this, trying to get this rolling away, and it's been two years. I really appreciate the stop signs. I think that will definitely help alleviate the sight problems around a certain bend on Pine Tree, but that is not alleviating the calming, the slowing of traffic. So that's not the solution for the whole of Pine Tree. And putting one hump when eight were suggested is only going to be a little portion of Pine Tree. So the median, I know it's, it's more cost-effective. But we're, we're, we're trying to get something rolling as soon as possible, because it just seems like it's dragging. And again, it's been two years. So my question is, I, I actually knocked on every door in my surrounding neighborhoods and on my street alone. I got the 80%. I got well above that. I got the 60%. And they were all in favor. And then one called me back on Pine Tree for the speed hump. So just out of curiosity, why did that not go to vote? Because that was four months. It was like probably mid-January that, that submitted.
If you, I don't think any of us would ever vote for eight speed humps on Pine Tree Road. I mean, just go down Aberdeen Avenue where they put two before, on Aberdeen Avenue in between two stop signs. And picture eight of those there. Picture a fire truck trying to get up to, they'd never make it. The house would burn down before they got up to that place. I mean, it would just, you can't do it. That's why we're looking for alternatives, because we're not going to vote for eight speed humps on that street. It doesn't make sense.
So when a traffic study is provided, and it's on a major cross street like that, I mean, why then provide speed humps? I mean, where, where is the correlation where we're working together to find a solution that we can all, do you see what I'm saying?
Your petition was for speed humps, was it not?
No, actually, I, I called to say I have an issue with the traffic. I have an issue with the speed.
Yeah.
And they put a traffic study.
Yeah.
And there was three.
They just make recommendations.
Okay.
We have the final say.
Okay.
And that's why it takes time, because we're trying to figure out what's best for you, and what's the best for our whole community. And that's what we're trying to solve.
Well, and also, we have a very capable traffic engineer. And she is trained to look at technical points. The state law on shrubbery, that was nice to have that. The fact that speed humps in a theoretical world are allowable. The fact that you can't, cannot use stop signs to slow traffic down. But ultimately, we have to look at more than that. We can accept everything she says, or her company says, or we can accept none of it, or somewhere in between. We have to look at what's right for the community, what's best for our fire company, our ambulances, and what makes practical sense. So that's an attempt to answer your question.
Absolutely. Is there a way to do a combo of it? Like, we, we just, right? I mean, we, we, exactly. I mean, the last time we had talked, they were going to do a combo of possibly the medians, a couple of stop signs, maybe a hump or two. And that would maybe be a solution to the whole street and issue.
Yeah. Well, when we came in, we were providing different alternatives, and I believe that our final recommendation was to move, to test different alternatives, because the speed humps are used predominantly in the township. So we were actually looking at something that we called a hybrid, where it had the intersection circles, and it also had some of the medians, some of the speed humps. And our thought was to look at the before and after studies for the different alternatives, and come up with something that's palpable for the fire department, you know, reduces the speeds, and meets the needs of as many people as we can. So there's, this is a significantly long roadway. Typically, we are charged with about 1,200 feet when we do this. So you usually come in with one or two speed humps, and it's taken care of. But this roadway is very long. And I understand the concerns. The other thing is, with those two stop signs up at the top, I, you know, I hesitate to say it, but it will be a traffic calming effect for the northern end of this road. So...
But is the northern end where the problem is, Mrs. Rolf?
I, I think it's, it's throughout the actual road, because I have, I have neighbors up top. I have neighbors in the middle where the blind curve is, and then I'm towards the bottom. So it's the entire portion of Pine Tree.
I think, I think, I think what, if we put the two stop signs in, and we put the one speed hump in, and then if we could put a median in where that downhill curve is, I think that's the solution. It might be more expensive. You can tell me how much it's going to cost, but I think that's to narrow that road for that section.
I think that's too much. I, I...
Me too. I think it...
I think it's, I, let's take one at a time here. And put a stop sign in a cricket. Make it three-way. That's where there's a real bad, I think I took the notes on that. That's where there's a real bad look to the, to the west. Start with that. If that doesn't work, then move to the next possible step.
Where are you talking? You want to, wait, Cricket?
Cricket.
You're really intent on getting that always stop there. Cricket did not meet the conditions for always stop control.
But Cricket is, I, I drive that a lot.
Right.
Cricket is where the car, as the Superintendent said, it just takes off at the top. By the time you get to Cricket, you're in a dangerous...
That's, actually, between Cricket and Rock Rose, no, I think it's just south of there. This is where the speed data was collected. This is the actual location where the Police Department gathered. So the 38 miles per hour is coming this way, and the 35 miles per hour is moving this way. And I understand what you're saying.
But, but, but hold on. But that, it just seems unlikely that you can get from King of Prussia Road 35 miles an hour right there.
You're unimpeded. It's a south, it's a, the grade runs toward, from Gulf down to King of Prussia.
And you might get the light.
Can you push, you push that up?
Yeah. This is the way the grade runs. If you ran water down this, it would run this way.
That's sloping down, so I can see...
No, it speeds them up. The grade...
Right. Upper Gulf is the high point.
Correct.
And it goes down.
And that, and the speeds for the vehicle...
Goes into the valley. So around the turn, that's where...
That's where the highest speed is.
Highest speed is. But if you're going, if you're going the other way...
Right.
If you're going from King of Prussia Road to the right, you're saying that, in that, in that one section right there, you get to 35?
You're about, you're approaching a curve, and you're going uphill. So intuitively, you would think people would go slightly slower in that direction.
Right.
Whereas when you're coming down, you've just come out of that death curve, and you're heading towards an open area of about 700 or 800 feet, which is, people are gaining speed as they're coming downhill and around that.
Yeah. Again, I'm just questioning, it just seems unlikely to me that you could get, in most instances, to 25. I guess if people are coming across King of Prussia Road, but there, there is the light there. And I also, I guess, it seems like there's, obviously, people are traveling too fast. So I would ask the police, have we done any of those, you put the box up and say your speed is? And do we, have we issued any tickets?
Yeah, the box, the speed boxes have been up there. And when we do the enforcement, it's between Spruce Tree and Rose Tree is where we get the speeding enforcement, where we write tickets. And between Cricket and King of Prussia, we write tickets.
And the box has been out on my telephone pole for twice now in the last two years.
Is this, this road, is this more commuter traffic than it is residents coming home, I mean, to their neighborhood house in that neighborhood?
Believe it or not, we get a lot of residents.
Okay.
I, I thought, we said it was commuter traffic coming...
It is, it is commuter traffic. When, when you get a misbalance of, of traffic volumes, and it looks like a time-of-day type of thing, you can be pretty certain, given the number of, or homes that are along there. We, we looked at that. And I think a lot of the traffic on that is commuter traffic, cutting through Upper Gulf and coming down to King of Prussia, to circumvent the corner at King of Prussia and Upper Gulf Road.
And so tell me the problem with Cricket. You just have to take the shrubs down?
Yes. Is that concise enough?
Right. So if people's coming out of Cricket, you're saying, you've got to take the shrubs down on the left-hand side?
Correct.
And you get your sight vision?
Correct.
Your sight, your, your sight distance.
And that will not affect your traffic? That's not a traffic calming?
Understood.
Okay.
On, on the inside, on the, you know, again, on the inside of that turn...
The resident, the residential driveways that are across, they're going to need to speak to the Police Department to come out and possibly cite any of those residents that have those shrubs that are obscuring their view of approaching Millerus.
I'd like to get the sense of the other five Commissioners tonight. I, I'd like to have a stop sign at Cricket and at Rock Rose. That's it. If that doesn't work, we'll revisit it. That's my feeling. I'd like to hear what the others say.
I, I, I could, I could agree with that. But, but that's not what, coming out of Amy's report. She's recommending Woods and Spruce Tree.
Right.
I know.
So I live, Jeff Fleming, I live towards the top, right across from the Woods. So the primary issue is sightline. So at that part of the street, it's not speed. So you're neglecting that issue if you don't address that. Towards the lower part, it's speed. So you have multiple issues, and it seems like we're trying to attack them one or the other. But if it's not done systemically, there's still going to be significant issues.
Is it hazardous where, where you are?
Yeah. So you can't cross the street. Like, if you want to walk the dog to the Woods Lane, you need to make sure that kids look both ways, as you would any street. But now, you go, one of them at a time, because it's 84 feet, 80... And it's supposed to be about...
Okay. So you say the Woods, if it had stop, if it had stop signs, it had a crosswalk...
You have a, you have a turn, so you can't fix it with the shrubs. We heard that. Spruce, you have the turn on the other way. Can't fix it with coming back shrubs or trees. And you have, it sounds like, only 30% of your actual sightline you're supposed to get.
So what, you're saying we should have four stop signs?
If you, either that or change the road, you're not going to be in compliance, right? You're not going to have your 240 or 300, whatever it was. This is my first time at one of these meetings, first time I've been involved in this. But quite honestly, just listening to it for 15 minutes, it sounds like there's a plan put forward, a lot of support from a lot of different people, and then we're throwing out different ideas real time. Jim, you said, why didn't we talk about this in November? So I'm a little confused, I guess, of what are we trying to solve?
This is government. We're doing the best we can.
That's fair.
So I'll give you my two cents on it.
I'm not in government.
As to, if it were me, I would put the stop signs everywhere where Amy says we should put a stop sign. And then where there's talk of speed humps, I would either put bump outs that constrain the street. My opinion is that they're effective. Other people might think that they're not. But bump outs that constrain the street and prevent that psychology that Amy talked about. And if that doesn't work, then you would go to some kind of speed hump, perhaps. But if it were me, that would be the combination that I would use. And then I also would say I support that idea that you, you don't just try to regulate the fast part, that you regulate the fast part by controlling 800 feet upstream of the fast part. So to me, all the stop signs that Amy identified with the interventions at the, the southern part, that seems to be the high-speed part of the, of the street.
And Steve, your opinion on bulbout versus the median? You'd rather have a median than a bulbout?
Well, actually, I'd just like to suggest one other item. So there's a speed cushion or a speed pillow, which is, works better with emergency vehicles. And it's actually noted in the Traffic Calming Handbook that you can put it on major emergency response routes, yet you still have a reduction in traffic and a reduction in speed. So I know there's some concern on the emergency response side, and we've heard that also from one of our fire folks. So my thought, it was, I'm the one who said, the painted lines, to me, that illusion only lasts so long, as far as keeping road widths narrowed. Medians, actual medians or physical curbed concrete or whatever material used bump outs do slow down. But my thought is, we, we could install a speed cushion or pillow as the one speed hump, and the stop signs have been noted, and progress from there if more is needed.
So the, this, what you're calling a speed cushion, that's the, the one that we can mount into the, we lag bolted into the street, correct?
No, actually, it's, there's not a real good design. It's...
Wide enough to allow the emergency vehicle's axles to pass through, but a car is not going to. Okay? So a fire truck's wide enough to go right over the speed hump and never actually run on the speed hump. But a car would have to go over at least part of it, and that's what would slow it down.
We, we get the design width of the axle for the fire vehicles, and we place three speed cushions on the roadway, so that the fire truck goes over the center one. And their wheels are between the outer cushions. The, the greatest difficulty with the speed cushion, and since Steve brought it up, I'm assuming that's okay with him, is that for snow plowing, it can be very difficult, because you have three, you can just imagine, it's like if you have a stone in the middle of the road that you would scrape over, and you may end up with some residual snow on either side of the cushion.
Very good. So my sense of, of these is that they are, they're speed humps for everything but fire trucks. And if that's, if that's what the community wants, but I, I think to the community, those are speed humps, and they don't care whether we call them cushions or, and that might be what the community wants. But, but to me, that's a funny term. I, I would just call them speed humps for everything but fire trucks. It solves the fire truck problem, but it's still a speed hump.
Are they smaller than speed humps?
Yes.
Not as long.
Speed humps go edge to edge.
I mean, height.
No, they're the same. They're basically a speed hump, but you just remove the asphalt between and to the sides, that you create pillows of, of asphalt.
That's the, I mean, this is a trade-off. Everything is a trade-off. I know that's frustrating to some people to hear. But the reality is that there's going to be a lot of opposition to speed humps, some of which will come from emergency services, some will come from the community. So what we have to decide with your input is, where is that trade-off going to be? There's going to be considerable, considerably less resistance from bump outs, because the only person's going to, there's going to be some Public Works resistance. But to, to those that go at appropriate speed, bump outs do nothing wrong. They, they don't harm you in any way. I think that there is documentation that they work. They're not as effective as speed humps, but they do work. And that's kind of a compromise that we can consider.
Okay, 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 great. Because I mean... Because I mean, I mean, basically, the petition, I went to door-to-door in, in like zero-degree weather, might I add. It was very cold.
But you didn't sweat?
It was cold. And, but no, they all wanted speed humps just to help that street and make it safe for our community and for our kids. I mean, I, I have young kids, we all have young children, and it really is a factor, I mean. So.
Well, I guess.
But it does sound like the four ways that Amy recommended and then some speed hump, speed pillow down in this lower area would address it.
I think if we had the two stop signs and then we had one of these speed between Cricket and Rock Rose and then one between King of Prussia and Cricket, I think that would do the trick.
I just know I live at 110 Pine Tree, I started it all, so I definitely know the blind side, but for me, that's where I live, it's crucial for my kids getting on the bus, I pull them from the bus.
What's crucial?
Slowing that, that traffic down. I get them on the bus, they don't have the thing coming down and the cars just go flying by at 15 miles per hour.
Well, Steve, I, we still have, I would want you to run these two speed hunts through the fire company.
Yes, sir. We already know that answer, we, we know they don't want them.
No, 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 but if you can, if the wheels, if you can go through, they're completely different, if they can get through.
Speed cushions.
Speed cushions, they wouldn't have an objection.
Steve, Steve, a quick question. The cost of the speed cushions at two locations versus a median out of concrete curbing?
I, I, I don't have a unit price for the, for the median, I mean, we could look at that. We, we figured rarely rough terms, a speed hump. And just so the commissioners know, what, what's on Aberdeen is not what we put in now. What we put in now is on St. David's by Shimonie, that's the appropriate speed hump. We, I don't know, I think we figured about $3,500 a speed hump. That's installed by us, that's labor and materials, so it would be the same, more or less, for the cushion or pillow.
Yeah, but you, you're talking about a plastic cushion or the?
Asphalt.
Asphalt, asphalt cushions. But we also, you're saying that the cushions are not a problem for the plow, or are they?
Okay, I'm going to give you the pros and cons from the Traffic Calming Handbook. They reduce vehicular speed, reduce vehicular roadway volumes, minimal impact or emergency response times, can be incorporated on major, major emergency response routes. Disadvantages, snow removal and as well as diverting of traffic. Honestly, they're all a problem for snow removal. It's never really cleaned by the speed hump, because the blade picks up and it doesn't always go back. So it's on a chain, so it only goes so far. So there's always some issues with snow removal.
So, and, and what about the bump outs, though? So.
I'd have to get some unit prices.
What's that?
I'd, I'd have to get some unit prices for the, the material or whatever it is, concrete curb, granite curb, that a bump out would be made out of. That, I couldn't give you a, a cost off the top of my head.
Steve, your expectation would be roughly similar, correct? We're, we're talking about similar amount of physical intervention.
Correct, because I, I think a bump out could easily just be the curb and it's backfilled with, you know, dirt, grass, some, some planting, so it doesn't have to be a hardscaped area.
Right.
Yes, sir.
My name's Kevin Brown, 127 Pine Tree Road, I'm right across from Rock Rose Lane. And just in terms of the speeding, I think a lot of these proposals are great, but I just feel that the stop sign, people on Spruce Tree, people going down the hill are going to accelerate past the stop sign and they're going to be going 40 miles an hour or greater past that point. And it's, it's going to, there's still going to be a speed issue at Rock Rose Lane. And also.
I'm sorry, so you, what are you saying? You want a stop sign at Rock Rose Lane?
I don't, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm just telling you that if you put it, I'm still concerned that if you put a stop sign at Spruce Tree Lane, there's still going to be a speeding issue where I am. And the other thing is that the road is very steep going down and as the police already said, if you don't hit your brakes, if, when I go down the hill, if I don't hit my brakes, I'm going 40 to 45 miles an hour by the time I hit my house. So you have to really ride your brake hard to be going 30 miles an hour past Rock Rose Lane. So those are things to consider. And also, they put their speed trap between Spruce Tree and Rock Rose Lane. And the last speed trap they did in end of March, between, I believe, 7 o'clock and 8:30, they caught like 10 to 15 people going greater than 40 miles an hour. Unfortunately, some of those were the neighbors. But, I mean, that's people going 15 miles an hour over the speed limit. They're not even at Rock Rose Lane yet. So, you know, while I think a lot of these proposals are great, I think anything to calm the traffic is good. I just, you know, and the other thing is that at that meeting we had, it seemed like a lot of the people at the lower end were the ones voicing their concerns about the speeding and everything. And I don't know if any of this addresses their concerns. People, it just seems to me, people are still going to be speeding at the mid and lower portions of Pine Tree Road.
So to summarize, we're, we're thinking about stop signs at Woods and Spruce Tree?
Per the recommendation, right? And then?
And then speed cushions between Rock Rose and Cricket?
Or, or, or bump outs.
Or bulb out or a median strip.
Or bulb outs. And then another traffic calming measure between Cricket and King of Prussia Road?
I don't, I don't think we had that one.
Yeah, that was the original.
So that would be the one, that would be the one location?
Two locations.
Two locations for bump outs?
No, yeah, bump outs or, or speed humps, all right.
Well, I mean, there's just no reason not to make, not to give staff direction tonight, is there?
That's why I summarized. So we want staff, I'll, I'll move that we have staff come back to the board with a final proposal on the stop signs and, and either speed cushions or bulb outs on the lower half of the roadway.
A median strip?
Or a median, low pricing. Now, Steve, just, just back of the envelope numbers at this point.
And as, I think it was Commissioner Curly who said, we, we can't actually purchase the speed pillows to, they're, you know, like we have those temporary speed humps, there's a couple companies that actually make them if we want to go a less, a less permanent route.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I mean, tonight, the board should make a decision on this and we have no budget for this anyhow, so we're going to have to find money for these. So tonight, the board should make a decision, which way you want to go.
I, I think, John, I'd like you to amend your motion to not just get a proposal to us on stop signs, but to have an ordinance in our next, at our next meeting for stop signs at those two locations you mentioned. And secondly, to have a proposal on additional measures at the lower end of, of Pine Tree.
I mean, I'll tell you my two cents then, similar to, so three motions, three different ideas, I guess that's good. So I, I think we just accept Amy's recommendations, so it's similar to what Jim said. I think we've seen enough to move on and accept those recommendations for the stop sign. The two interventions that remain up in the air are the intervention between King of Prussia and Cricket and Cricket and Rock Rose. And it's my understanding that that requires a physical intervention, correct, Amy? Meaning that, so to me, the issue is, is bump outs or speed cushions. So I would like then just to have, I mean, my preference at this point is, is the bump out. So that's what I, that's what my recommendation would be at this point, I don't know if others feel differently, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned about the bump out for the people living on that side of the street getting out onto the road.
Well, that's what, that's what we'll have the experts look at, the bump out and they'll tell us and they'll put it in the right place.
But he was saying that a median strip is just as effective and, but it's expensive, so that's why I thought we should look at that with the bulb out.
Okay, I don't know about this.
Opinion is bulb outs and, and median is, is, it's still concrete work for the most part, so.
I mean, I would, Steve, a, a median and a, or Amy, a, a median and a bump out are not the same, they're not, one is very expensive. When you're messing in the middle of the road, that changes the cost.
It can be more, yes, it can be more significant. I, I thought that our original report had a discussion about money.
Well, we've been talking about bulb outs for 20 years.
Yeah.
I guess it'd be a good place to try a couple.
Yeah, the median was 100 foot long, yeah, see, I would be reducing those, I think we'd be looking at something smaller. But I think the median would be more money than doing the bulb out or the curb extensions, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I'm not saying that we're making a, you know, this isn't a money-based decision, it's just I, I don't, I, I, Steve, you put in a placard in at Conestoga and South Devon, very noticeable the effect that it has. The, the road is narrow there. The prevailing theory, as I understand it, is that people drive at the speed that makes them feel safe, not at the speed that makes your children safe when you're waiting for the bus. So when you constrain the road, it's sad, it's a little cynical, they're less concerned about your child, they're more concerned about the damage they might do to their car, so they slow down. And so I, I think there's theory that supports that. The speed hump is kind of like the, it's the most effective, but it has the most negative side effects and for many people, it's problematic. So in my opinion, between the interventions that Amy identified with the stop sign and then the two physical interventions at the high-speed areas, I think that's a, a significant solution that can improve the situation.
Okay, thank you all.
In agreement, we're going to have two ordinance, we're, we're going to have an ordinance presented to us next time for the two stop signs. The stop signs and then what are we going to do with the others then?
And then? We need, we need cost estimates on bulb out, median for the lower half.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bulb out cushions and the median strips.
For two sites.
For two locations, so it's going to be.
Two locations below Rock Rose.
Right, between Rock and Cricket.
Yep.
And Cricket and King of Prussia. So it's three agenda items.
And do we, do we want to eliminate the median or do we want to have that? I mean, to me, to me, it's either, to me, it would, I think we choose between bump outs or the speed cushions.
I'm more in favor of medians. I think, I think from, and Steve, Steve should be answering this. From snow plowing, I think it's easier to plow with a median than it is with bulb outs. However, the, the median may cost 10 times more than a bulb out, so, you know.
Yeah, like the curb.
Let's just leave it in for cost estimates and then you can make your decision at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll see where we get the money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, what do we have? Okay, go ahead, Jim.
All right, I have, I have, tonight's the night for proclamations. I have the privilege of, of a proclamation from the governor's office and I'd like Mr. Norsini to come up to the lectern.
Steve, you're being called on the carpet.
This is Public Works Week and behind Public Works is engineering. And I want to make, before I read the proclamation, I want to take note of the fact that on the Board of Commissioners, we have 16 or 17 years of engineering education, starting with Commissioner Nagel, who has a bachelor's in engineering plus is a professional engineer. We have Commissioner Fisher, who is a, holds bachelor's and master's degrees in engineering. And we have last, but certainly as important as the others, is Commissioner Curly, who has three degrees, including a PhD in engineering.
And don't forget Mr.
Commissioner Booker is a.
Mr. Booker has a engineering degree also.
Of mechanical engineering as well.
Yes.
That's great. Well, I must say that I could not.
I have a wealth of experience.
I could not pass, I struggled with pre-calculus back, what's the era before the dinosaur era called? Is it? Yeah, that's when I, I struggled with pre-calculus. All right, I'm going to read the comp, it's time to maybe recognize the wonderful work that our Public Works people do. This is from the governor's office, it's Public Works Week, May 17th to 23rd. Whereas Public Works infrastructure, facilities and services are of vital importance to the health, safety and well-being of the people of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, engineers and administrators and whereas these individuals who represent all levels of government are responsible for and must design, build, operate and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewage and refuse disposal, disposal systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is important for citizens and civic leaders of this country to gain knowledge of and maintain an interest in the Public Works needs and programs of their respective communities and whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th annual National Public Works Week. Now therefore, I, Tom Wolfe, Governor of the Commonwealth, do hereby proclaim this week as Public Works Week in Pennsylvania. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers and administrators and recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health and welfare. Given under my hand and seal this 22nd day of April in the year of our Lord, 2015, Tom Wolfe, Governor. So congratulations to you and all your people. I think it's important because we are universally recognized as the best Public Works operations in southeastern Pennsylvania, maybe all of Pennsylvania, I don't know. And people always mention our snow plowing, the wonders and miracles that you and your people bring about. We have a wonderful park system that are maintained beautifully well. We have great leaf, leaf collection, stump removal, trash pickup, everything. And it's all due to the, your leadership and the leadership of our manager, Robert Zinkowski. And so you have every reason to be proud of things.
If I may just say one thing, I am very fortunate to work with a fantastic group of guys in the Public Works Department. They're hands-down the best and the leadership you mentioned is top-down, from the board through the manager on down, so we thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I'm glad we have you.
Community development, community development?
Yes, the first item is a, a authorization or a discussion to amend the recreation impact fee ordinance. So John, this was your idea, John Nagel, so do you want to lead us on this?
Well, what I would like us to do is look at. Look for necessary changes to address the recent oversight that we have with regard to dormitories. As we've had lengthy discussions with John about the other matters, I would just assure that the rate we're using, the rate we have applied is valid and have that confirmed or recommend a different rate.
All right, can I have a motion for authorization?
All right, hold on a second. We've got to talk, because maybe we all don't agree with what, so let us.
We know what we're going to.
So hold on, I want to make a motion, you can second it. My motion is just to have Solicitor Rice review and revise that ordinance as it's currently written to make certain that it covers all the uses in the township that we intend to cover, not just residential use and that it has fair and equitable treatment on all those uses.
Second, Commissioner comment, public comment?
Well, the Commissioner comment would be, I, I think that that, all that goes without saying, doesn't it? You have a sense of what you would want him to change then? Do you need to discuss that at all or no?
No, I think John Rice already has a sense of what he thinks should be changed to correct the language such that there's no ambiguity. Right now, there's ambiguity in the law.
See, I don't think there's ambiguity, I think there's just, there's, there are uses that, okay, so you're probably right then, that that's, the ambiguity is in the use, not in the amount. So, but, but I, you know, my sense is, this, for me, this isn't one more attempt for us to get more money from developers. So if there's uncertainty in the uses, then we can address them, but I don't see myself advocating this as another way to get more money from developers.
I guess as far as my concern, in general, I agree with that. I don't, I'm not, we're not in the business of, of soaking the constituents, be they taxpayers or, or neighbors or, or otherwise. To me, though, it's an issue of what was the intent, right? And that's what I understood this to be. So I, I thought this issue was, are we going to correct the language to be what the intent was originally? Or are we going to correct it, correct it to be, to have more specificity with respect to the applicability of it? And my sense of the board was that they wanted to, the intent was to have a higher fee rather than a. than a, have a more broad application, but maybe, maybe it would be both. And I guess we'll need to come back with that particular language, but it was the original intent, I thought, was the issue, and apparently, that's, that's in question.
We're not, you know, my thought is, we're not changing the original intent and all, we're just going to address the institutional use and the commercial uses and, that aren't spelled out in our ordinance. And we're not raising the fee, we're not raising the square footage, we're just addressing those two issues. That was the intent of this resolution, asking John to do that. So do we have a motion?
Yes.
Second?
We have, we're the second.
All right, public comment?
Good evening, Jane Gally, Bar Clayton Road. The only thing I would like you to, oh, sorry, usually I'm loud enough everybody can hear me, but anyway. Jane Gally, Bar Clayton Road, the only thing I would ask you to consider is, when you are discussing this, the fee, et cetera, and what, who is a resident, who is not, what is a residential spot, the youngsters that live in Villanova, in the new residence along the way, or any of the students in this, in this township, can register to vote here. So by that very logic, they are residents, and they use our facilities, they use the parks, they go here and there, and they, they, they should be subject to that. So that's just my thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Aye? Oppose? Passes 6 to 0. Number F is off the agenda, per Commissioner Booker.
Yeah, I had a, I had a visual that I don't have with me, prepared to go for the group, and I'd like to move this, so I discuss it next time, take 10 minutes.
You want to just do it under old business or new business, rather than something on the agenda, or you want it on the agenda?
I'd like to have it on the agenda, please.
All right, okay. Finance and audit?
No report.
Library?
Nothing.
Parking rec?
Nothing.
Personnel administration?
No report.
Public health?
The issue from public health, who met earlier tonight, the Board of Health, is to remind everybody that it's lime season. Ticks are out there, the weather changing, they're coming out big time. Recommends the use of deep, and tucking your, your leg of your pants into your socks so that, you know, the critters don't crawl up your leg. Checking yourself when you get back home, don't just count on your eyes, use your hands, use your fingers, they're small, and if you do see a bull's eye rash, get to your doctor. It's an easily treatable disease if it's detected.
Old business? New business?
Yeah.
John raises a hand.
One, one, if I can raise one old business matter. You had, we had received, this has to do with Ardrossen and the payment of some fees, which came up, I think, two meetings ago. I got an inquiry today from John Snyder on behalf of Ardrossen. There were some fees that were to be paid last week. It was a six-month time period, it's about $78,000. There was a written request to this board to extend that to August by three months. And I don't, I'm not sure you approved it, at least, I was the one meeting that Jonathan Rice was here. My understanding is you didn't, you didn't address that.
No, we approved the extension, but we specifically did not approve the part about not, not charging him that, because the berm would obviate the need for that money.
Well, that, that was that issue. This is, this is a second issue, John.
Oh, okay.
That was the berm issue.
Right.
That got solved at your two meetings ago. This is one of the conditions of the approval, there were some.
What's the 78,000 for, John?
Well, it was in lieu of constructing the pedestrian path along New Town Road, and there were some tree funds that were to be paid, because they put smaller trees on the berm. So all of that was to be paid six months from the approval resolution, which was last week. They asked for a three-month extension based on the lack of settlements and the delay on going to settlement with individual lot owners. So it's, it's up to the board, whether you want to. Does this hurt us in any way if we give them a three-month extension? It's just three months that, you know, those funds won't. I don't have any problem. Any other commissioner have a problem?
Not like we have a high.
All right, we don't, you want to make a motion? Yes, please. I move that we give them an extension to August, what's the date? August 10th. August 10th. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner comment?
The discussion is, the issue related to the berm and the earthwork, right, weren't we gonna get some more information on that?
No, that's just different. This is different. Yeah. This is an escrow, they're putting up the $40,000 for extra trees and for trails, and it comes to $78,000. Has nothing to do with building a berm or not building a berm, or spending the $40,000. So we're just giving them an extension for $78,000 to put this, to.
And it was because he wanted to sell some more lots? Is that what it was?
Well, it was, it was tied into a date or the sale of the 12th lot. That's the way your approval was in the resolution.
Wasn't there some $10,000 or a DDP reason?
All right, that's all right. No, no. It's just. John, it's moving second. All those in favor? Public comment? All those in favor? Aye? Oppose?
Nay.
Passes 5 to 1. What's that, new business or old business?
Old business.
All right, new business.
Okay, new business. Just want to remind residents, we just had an incident with our tub grinder. If you're putting out yard waste on Wednesdays, do not put steel rods in the yard waste. We have damaged our tub grinder, and we're looking at $10,000 worth of damage. So please, when you're putting out yard waste, only things that fall from the trees, trees, tree limbs, nothing else.
All right. Our public participation? A motion returned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned, thank you.